Ladies and gentlemen, please have a seat and welcome to this breakout session, number 10 on deterrence, nonproliferation and disarmament. My name is Corentin Brousselin. I am in charge of the Deterrence and Proliferation Research Programme at the French Institute of International Relations in Paris, and it is going to be my pleasure to chair this breakout session. I have to say that it was a good surprise to see that there would be an actual session that would focus partly, at least, on deterrence at an EU-sponsored conference, and I’d like to thank the organisers for this initiative. I think it’s a great initiative. I think it’s important to consider together both the opportunities for arms control and disarmament and the continuing or changing requirements of deterrence, and both have to be considered together. I think since we last met in this framework one year ago, lots of events have occurred that may have shaken our confidence in our ability to ensure European security and security in the European neighbourhood, to prevent hostile initiatives or to prevent moves that might be damaging in the long term to the international order, or to reduce nuclear risks and WMD risks in Europe and its neighbourhood. So, we can think of the chemical weapons attacks in Syria, in Guta, one year ago, but also obviously of the current situation in Ukraine, the annexation of Crimea, and what appears to be a direct military involvement of Russia in eastern Ukraine. So, I think, and these are only examples of the kind of events that should lead us to question at least our assumptions regarding whether or not we have the right policies, we have the right posture, instruments to maintain security and stability in the continent, whether or not it is necessary to reopen the DDPR file in NATO. I’m not saying it is necessary, I’m saying we might want to ask the question whether or not there is a future right now for arms control, and what kind of future, what kind of measure we can think about. And so I think we have a great opportunity today to listen to three distinguished panelists whom I’ve been asked not to introduce in detail, so I ask you to refer to the conference app for the full detailed biographies. I’ve decided, as is my right, since I’m the chair, and thank you to the organisers for that, I’ve decided to reorganise slightly the order of presentations. We will first be listening to Alexei Albatov from the Moscow Centre of the Carnegie Endowment for International Peace and from the Russian Academy of Science, and then to William Elberg, head of the Arms Control and Coordination Section at the NATO headquarters, and we’ll finish with Paolo Foradori, professor at the University of Trento and author of a recent book on tactical nuclear weapons in Ukraine. In Ukraine, sorry.
That’s a Freudian.
In Europe. With this, I will now give the floor to Alexei. Thank you very much, Alexei.
Thank you. It’s a great pleasure and honour for me to be at this great event. There are reasons to consider the present state of nuclear arms control as a comprehensive and systemic crisis. All serious nuclear disarmament negotiations are deadlocked, with no prospect of a breakthrough in the nearest future. Nonproliferation is in stagnation, and there is high probability that 2015 review conference will be worse than 2005 review conference. And the crisis in and over Ukraine is not the reason for that. This crisis certainly greatly exacerbated the situation, but the crisis started earlier. I do not hope to propose solutions for numerous problems. I don’t have enough time, and I do not know enough to propose such solutions, but understanding the reasons for this situation is the first step to search for solutions to the problems. So I will concentrate on the reasons for the present crisis. Nuclear arms control is a child of Cold War. It was born by Cold War and was ideally suited to Cold War. International politics revolved around Soviet-American relations. Confrontation, nuclear arms race, produced the greatest threat to international security, the threat of global nuclear war. And at a certain moment, nuclear arms control became the principal instrument to prevent that threat. It started, serious arms control started by the end of the 60s, and then for 40 years produced eight very important treaties, and in this sense it was a great success. Certainly, nuclear arms control was not the instrument that ended Cold War. Cold War ended for other reasons, but nuclear arms controls was conducive to ending Cold War. Ironically, the end of Cold War and the change of international security priorities affected Soviet and then Russian-American relations stopped to be the focal point of international relations and international security. Since the end of confrontation removed the threat of nuclear war between the superpowers, far to the periphery of international security agenda, the attention towards this important endeavour started to decline. Russian-American relations were not the centre of international relations, and even in Russian-American relations, nuclear arms control was not the centre of channels of communication, agreements and agenda. And certainly, the end of Cold War changed greatly the priorities of international security. Other threats came to the foreground. At first, the end of confrontation produced powerful incentive for nuclear arms control, and in the first years after 1990, there were great breakthroughs in nuclear disarmament and nuclear nonproliferation, which proved by experience that those two principal venues of nuclear arms control are closely intertwined. But by the end of the 90s, stagnation started to affect both, nuclear disarmament and nuclear arms control. Since nuclear war was no longer a threat, the question was, what is the purpose of nuclear disarmament? Of course, nuclear nonproliferation required nuclear disarmament, but it did not indicate what is the basis of nuclear disarmament, what are the stages, what is the concept, what is the focus? And we can see since the end of the 90s, growing stagnation and eventually a deadlock in this process. What we see now is the worst of the two evils. We still are living in polycentric world. Nuclear war threat is not considered to be the principal danger. Attention to nuclear arms control is very low, but on the other hand, cooperation has stopped, and the Ukrainian crisis moved us towards new Cold War relationship, at least between Russia and the West, two principal players, two principal parties of nuclear arms control. And in some respects, the present crisis has moved us even beyond Cold War standards, economic sanctions, neutral countries planning to join NATO and so on. For Russia, in this situation, nuclear weapons have become a sacred cow, just like ballistic missile defence is for the United States. Nuclear weapons are considered to be the principal instrument to make up for Russian inferiority in traditional and innovative conventional weapons, and also the principal factor of Russian status and prestige in the world. It’s interesting, it would be interesting to discuss how nuclear deterrence and nuclear weapons affect the Ukrainian crisis from behind the scenes, but it is certainly a subject of a different conference. So here are political reasons for the present crisis. We have all the negative effects towards arms control, which started by the end of the 90s because this problem was losing priority, and we have lack of cooperation and instead of that, growing confrontation between major players. But besides that, there are technical reasons for the present state of nuclear arms control. No longer, nuclear arms control is a thing in itself. For instance, in strategic nuclear arms control, other weapons and considerations are playing greater role than nuclear weapons, in particular conventional offensive and defensive systems and technologies. The new start signed in 2010 most probably was the last treaty that was signed on the basis of the model that was forged by Robert McNamara in the end of the 60s, and this model was disregard tactical nuclear weapons, disregard conventional offensive systems, disregard third nuclear weapon states, stringently limit ballistic missile defences. Neither of these principal assumptions will stay in the foreseeable future. And in the future, if we ever overcome Ukrainian crisis, which I very much hope we do, and come back to strategic arms control, those other things which I mentioned would affect the prospect of a treaty much more than the problems within nuclear imbalance, which we were solving quite successfully during the last 40 years of strategic arms control. Moreover, the new technologies, long-range offensive conventional precision-guided systems and conventional ballistic missile defences are proliferating in the world. They are no longer domain of the two principal powers. Both ballistic missile defences are proliferating and conventional precision-guided systems are proliferated. So even if we are successful, we, I mean Russia and the United States, in addressing these problems in a bilateral format, it will be very difficult to isolate these systems from other countries which possess and develop them. The lines between nuclear and conventional systems, between global and regional systems, is blurred by rapid technological development, I would say by technological revolution, and that would create a lot of problems in the future if we ever to return to this business of negotiations. Third nuclear weapon states. It is logical that nuclear arms control cannot continue in a bilateral format forever, and Russian position now is that no longer bilateral nuclear arms control, other nuclear weapon states have to be limited as well. However, there is no concept, no idea on which countries are to be involved, in what sequence, on what basis, on what conceptual principles, and which nuclear weapons are to be the subject of limitation as far as third nuclear weapon states are concerned. Initially, nonproliferation treaty was designed to prevent non-nuclear weapons states from acquiring nuclear weapons, but it was never designed to prevent non-nuclear states from acquiring technological capability and expertise to come to the threshold of acquiring nuclear weapons. And we have not been able to devise this, as the experience of Iran shows very clearly and as experience of North Korea showed very clearly and persuasively. And the nuclear renaissance, which is being forecasted for the foreseeable future, will make this problem much more difficult. Well, I’ve given you my idea about the reasons for the present stalemate, I would say a crisis. So initially, I called my presentation, nuclear arms control, a pause or an end of history. I would say that most probably, it is an end of history of nuclear arms control based on traditional principles, as we have practised them during the last 40 years. New principles, new formats will have to be developed. I cannot propose this now, but I think that we together should start working on these principles, especially the younger generation of arms controllers who are present here will have this job for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexei, and I’ll give the floor instantly to William Elberg. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the EU and the other cosponsors, and Yatsuk Bolitsa in particular. I’m sitting in for Wolfgang Ruderschausser, who couldn’t be with us, he’s ill, and I hope I can be a good substitute for him. I’ll note that we’re in the creativity and exploration room, and that’s probably appropriate because we’re, as Alexei said, we’re going to have to explore some new ways on the way forward in this challenging environment. But I will be addressing NATO’s roles and activities in deterrence, nonproliferation and disarmament. It’s a complex set of topics, so I’ll try to do it justice. I’m sure you’re all following some of the developments in Wales at the NATO summit, where our heads of state and government are concluding two days of meetings later this afternoon. They should be issuing a summit declaration that addresses the full set of issues before the alliance. I predict that they will recommit at the highest level to NATO’s fundamental and enduring purpose, and that is to safeguard the freedom and security of all its members by political and military means. It will also include two statements relevant to this panel discussion, namely that deterrence based on an appropriate mix of nuclear and conventional capabilities remains the core element of our overall strategy, and that arms control, disarmament and nonproliferation play a very important part in the achievement of the alliance’s security objectives. You know that NATO itself is not a party to any arms control agreement. Allies individually participate in arms control, disarmament and nonproliferation. However, the NATO strategic concept still focuses on this area as a key element of our core tasks on cooperative security. We as an alliance also encourage and facilitate our members or partners and other countries to implement their obligations fully wherever possible. But deterrence, of course, is very important, and to quote the Deterrence and Defence Posture Review from 2012, “As long as nuclear weapons exist, NATO will remain a nuclear alliance.” Our policies and strategies for deterrence and defence are balanced and interconnected in this regard. Our traditional nuclear policy posture holds that nuclear weapons are a core component of the overall capabilities alongside conventional and missile defence forces. At the same time, we’re committed to creating the conditions for a world free of nuclear weapons in accordance with our obligations under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty, and these interrelated topics are important subjects for discussion in allied capitals at NATO headquarters and at the summit in Wales. I don’t want to give too much of a history lesson, but it is worth looking at some of the roots of the current bodies at NATO that deal with these topics. One of the key events in NATO’s history, hinted at by Alexei’s talk, was the Harmel Report in 1967, which decided that the key functions of the alliance are on a dual track: deterrence to make sure that no ally could be threatened, at the same time, détente, seeking negotiations to end the arms race. This policy of deterrence and détente, I think, is just as relevant today as it was in 67. Embracing the Harmel Report at NATO meant that NATO members then embarked on a whole series of arms control endeavours. We formed a high-level task force on conventional arms control to support negotiations for the CFE treaty and the implementation. That body still meets today and is still trying to find a way forward with Russia on how to break the deadlock in European security. On nuclear policy, allies have a nuclear planning group and a high-level group to set alliance policy on nuclear weapons. We also have, in the past, we had this special consultative group, and that group was the body where NATO discussed things like the INF treaty. It stopped meeting after the presidential nuclear initiatives in 1991, but you may have read that the alliance in 2013 created a new committee, the Special Advisory and Consultative Arms Control, Disarmament and Nonproliferation Committee, or the ADNC as we call it, to discuss strategic stability with Russia and non-strategic nuclear weapons. One of the core tasks of that group is to discuss how to develop non-strategic nuclear weapons transparency with Russia. Of course, in the current environment, it’s hard to see how we’re going to move forward on that, but it is an important task. On nonproliferation, allies have been focusing increasingly on WMD. The WMD initiative of 1999 was an important step there, and the creation of the NATO WMD Centre in 2000. We also have a chemical, biological, radiological and nuclear defence task force, which is currently chaired by the UK and supported by the Czech Centre of Excellence, to defend NATO population’s territory and forces against seaborne threats. We have the Committees on Proliferation in Paul Mill format and in Defence format to provide allies with forums to discuss the full range of nonproliferation and counterproliferation topics. The CP, as we call it, has an increasingly full agenda, as allies see increased value at headquarters in discussing these topics. And just briefly to talk about the five ways then that we address deterrence, nonproliferation and disarmament. We set alliance policy at headquarters, both with ministerials and the summit, heads of state and government, ministers, issue communiques, declarations and other high-level policy statements. Then we form allied positions on specific topics, and this is as we were talking about the HLG, the NPG, the HLTF, the ADNC, the CP, all these different committees that meet and form allied positions. We coordinate implementation of agreements. The High Level Ad-hoc Working Group, the Verification Coordinating Committee for Conventional Arms Control help focus allied efforts and make sure that we’re all implementing together. We conduct partnership activities through the Euro-Atlantic Partnership Committee. We bring in our partners and we talk about arms control, deterrence, nonproliferation, disarmament topics, the Mediterranean Dialogue, the Istanbul Cooperation Initiative, partners across the globe, NATO-Ukraine Commission, just to name a few. And then conducting outreach. One of our major outreach activities is the NATO WMD Conference. This year, we held, it’s the 10th one in Interlock, and some of you were there. We also have NATO School at Oberammergau, the NATO Defence College, where we reach out to partners, allies and other audiences. I’d be remiss if I didn’t focus a little bit on the NATO-Russia relationship. As you all know, we suspended all our practical civil and military cooperation in all the NRC formats due to Russia’s actions in Ukraine. I was personally quite involved in the Arms Control, Disarmament and Nonproliferation Working Group, and since I came to NATO in 2012, we had a very robust schedule of meetings. It was a rare opportunity for Russia to engage with allies on a strategic level, an opportunity which I have to say they did not fully realise. We discussed new START implementation, WMD terrorism, counterproliferation, other topics like that. But unfortunately, with the actions in Ukraine and the violation of the Budapest Memorandum, we’re in a completely different environment in terms of these kinds of discussions. I can’t really see the way forward at this moment, and I fear for actions like contravening the Budapest Memorandum on the NPT regime. I share Alexei’s view that it’s going to be a difficult RevCon. But of course, allies in Wales will continue to call on Russia to return to full compliance with their obligations under international law, and I hope we can see a positive way forward in the future. So hopefully, my talk has given you a little bit of an idea of what we do at NATO headquarters and some of the historical roots, the committees and the ways we reach out. I’ll stop there and look forward to questions. Thank you.
I think, thank you very much, William, for outlining the varied NATO roles on WMD and nuclear weapons. Paolo, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thanks to the conference organisers for the invitation and the opportunity to speak to you today. I will focus on the issue of tactical nuclear weapons, which is an issue that very well illustrates the complex relationship between disarmament, nonproliferation and deterrence, although here we better talk about extended deterrence, that is, the extension of the nuclear umbrella of the United States to the European allies. So as regards to nonproliferation and disarmament, the formal deployment of US nuclear weapons in five European non-nuclear weapon states is certainly problematic, in my view. First of all, there’s a problem of compatibility with the spirit, if not the letter, of the NPT. Second, it is a very negative example that establishes a dangerous precedent. And thirdly, it undermines the credibility of NATO’s commitment to, as William said, the commitment to create the conditions for a world without nuclear weapons. So by maintaining few, in my view, scarcely useful tactical nuclear weapons in Europe, NATO, which is the most powerful military alliance in history, has sent out a rather negative message that harms the cause of nonproliferation and disarmament. As regards to deterrence, as you know, a relationship of extended deterrence suffers from an intrinsic credibility problem that springs from the clash between the value that a protege represents for the deterrent and the possible cost that the terror would incur by intervening in a conflict to defend the protege. And this issue, as we’ll see in a moment, is still very crucial in the current state of crisis over Ukraine. Now, the past few years, I’ve seen an immediate debate in the States and in Europe on the role of such weapons in Europe, and whether they can be further reduced or complete removed from Europe. This debate was particularly intense in the run-up to the 2010 strategic concept, when, as you might remember, the German foreign minister at the time described tactical nukes as a sort of relics of a forever vanished past, and hence more a liability than an asset in the post-Cold War security environment. However, resistance to NATO change in NATO nuclear policy came from some of the new members of NATO from central and eastern Europe, especially the Baltic States, who feel very vulnerable, who feel threatened by a neighbour in Russia and fear abandonment. So to cut a long story short, prioritising alliance cohesion, the outcome of the 2012 Deterrence and Defence Posture Review, DDPR, was a decision not to alter substantially the status quo, but without closing the door to a conditional process that could lead to a reconfiguration of the nuclear sharing arrangements and possibly to further reductions in the future. So where do we stand today? Are we making any progress towards that direction? What are the prospects for discussing further cuts in tactical weapons? To me, the answer is pretty clear. Today, any hope, any hope to discuss transparency and confidentiality measure, let alone reductions for tactical nuclear arsenals anytime soon is completely unrealistic. Of course, the Ukraine crisis is having a very negative impact, although it is interesting to know that this crisis reopened the debate on the tactical issue that largely subsided after the publication of the DDPR. According to the supporters of the withdrawal, the Ukraine crisis has shown that European tactical weapons proved useless for deterrence and assurance purposes, thus strengthening the case for their elimination. In addition, this argued that the necessary modernisation of the bombs and of the delivery vehicles are wasting wages. vehicles are wasting huge resources that could be otherwise invested in much more needed conventional weaponry. On the other hand, of course, you have those on the positive camp who argue that their presence and the role of tactical nukes are today all the more crucial to reaffirm this strong commitment of the US to the defense of Europe in the face of an assertive Russian foreign policy. Now, regardless who is right or wrong on this issue, we can discuss this in the Q&amp;A if you like, the fundamental fact is that the strategic context in which the debate of the presence, the role, and the future of tactical nuclear weapons was taking place has dramatically worsened. The post-Cold War thinking and the relative warming of relations between NATO and Russia, which lasted for quite some time since the end of the Cold War, has largely vanished, with the Ukraine crisis dealing a major blow to the attempt to create, in the words of the NATO-Russia Council, quote, "a true strategic and modernized partnership between NATO and Russia in the common space of peace, security, and stability in the Euro-Atlantic area," end of quote. So I'm afraid to say that the window of opportunity for a breakthrough has closed, at least for the foreseeable future. If a negotiation on tactical nuclear weapons was unlikely but possible until one or two years ago, chances of success are, in my view, close to zero now that NATO-Russia relationship has hit the lowest point since the end of the Cold War. Let me just remind you again that all practical civilian and military cooperation between NATO-Russia has been suspended. NATO-Russia cooperation on missile defenses is also technically suspended, but I would say de facto terminated. Progress towards another round of bilateral strategic nuclear relations reductions, as Alexei said, is dead in the water and unlikely to be revived anytime soon. In the meantime, NATO has accused Russia of testing a new medium-range cruise missile in violation of the INF, plus both US and Russia conducted maneuvers involving nuclear delivery vehicles. So in conclusion, I'm personally convinced that tactical nuclear weapons in Europe are weapons of very little value and of very little credibility in terms of deterrence. I believe that further reductions and eventual complete elimination of the remaining tactical nukes from Europe would serve the cause of nonproliferation and disarmament well and at very little cost. I'm also convinced that a properly tailored Asian model of extended deterrence whereby the US nuclear umbrella can continue to function credibly without forward basing could, at least in principle, be applicable to the European context. However, I'm afraid that this view is today not very common within NATO, and the advocates of nuclear weapons, who have been on the defense for the last few years, see the current crisis as an opportunity to speak out and to emphasize the relevance of nuclear weapons today, strategic nuclear weapons, but also tactical nuclear weapons. And I think I'll stop here.
Paolo, thanks very much, and thanks to the three of you for staying within the 10-minute limit. I will now open the Q&amp;A session. Obviously, I don't know many of you, and there's a lot of people, so please introduce yourselves as soon as I give you the floor, and I apologize in advance if I am unable to name you directly. So, ma'am, in the back, please.
Thank you. Angela Kaye yesterday asked for more engagement and less isolation, and I would like to ask if you could elaborate on the reasons why the NATO-Russia Council has not met. And the second question, if there is a permanent armistice, would there be reasons to call the NATO-Russia Council together in order to at least exchange information and maybe start a dialogue?
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
I'm Bernd Kubik from Privin Frankfurt. I have a question to each of you. Mr. Arbatov, I like your analysis very much, and if I understood you correctly, in a nutshell, you said the problem is, why we have a new setting for arms control, is a technological and political and economic asymmetry between the United States and NATO on the one hand and your country on the other hand. My question to you is, and you have in your fine book on missile defense, on page 369, if I may quote you.
Oh, yes, I remember.
You're saying that there is a big group in your country that wants to continue, that needs NATO and the United States as an enemy. And I think this kind of group, I think to some extent, explains what you yourself have deplored, namely that the Putin meditative government have not responded constructively to the March 2013 scrapping, canceling of the fourth phase of missile defense in Europe. And I think this is a negative fact. In that respect, I think your government contributed to what has been escalated. But I think the deeper problem is that the new American missile defense system, I think it's an excellent scheme from a US hegemonic point of view. It is in Europe. It keeps you at bay, but I think the major factor is missing, and that is China. And I think your country is, the challenge to your government is not just to position yourself with respect to the only superpower, United States, but also with respect to China. And I think this is probably the major challenge. What I deplore regarding Mr. Putin's policy is that he has gone beyond the arms control and nuclear and strategic realm by trying to solve the status, the world power problem, by annexing Crimea and by fiddling around and destabilizing Ukraine. I think this makes things worse, and I wished we could get back to the delinquage and to the nuclear realm again. My question to you, Mr. Albrecht, I must say, I'm glad we have a cautious government in Berlin, given the fact that your Secretary General, who I must say, I'm pleased that he leaves, has been fairly belligerent in many respects. I can't understand it, because we have a second asymmetry, and that is the one between the United States, which really is going to provide something in terms of defense to Europe, and the paper tigers that we, as European nations, provide to the so-called population defense. We can do it, but again, we have to deal with these facts, and I'm glad that the major powers in Europe, and I think this will be reflected in the Wales statement, concern the fact that we should stay within the Russia and NATO principles and not go beyond it. Anything else, it's also in terms of rhetoric, and I think Mr. Stoltenberg will be different, as I think will Hamas. To you, Paolo, looking to the Middle East, and we have written eloquently along it, what would the role of Europe as a non-nuclear zone, wouldn't this mean an enhancement in terms of its credibility? If we look as a European role in Helsinki, the couple of weeks, I think we'll have a conference there, so is this something where the Europeans could, as a non-nuclear power, could enhance the credibility and be a good point of reference for the people in the Middle East who want to have a nuclear weapons-free zone?
Thank you very much. We already have questions for each panelist. I think I will just stop now for the first round and give the floor maybe to Alexei
Certainly, there are domestic factors in Russia which affect its foreign policy. And after 2011, 2012, my judgment is that the president, who returned, and his team decided that further integration with the West would undermine their political system. And the mass protest movements in 2011 and 2012 were taken with great concern by the political leadership. Moreover, since they could not say that the movements are here because we are so bad, they said the movements are here because the West is encouraging them. And the conclusion was that Russia should estrange itself from the West, not go further in integration, both in economic and in security areas. That was the reason why decision by the United States to cancel the fourth phase of, yes, how do you call it, plan adaptation?
European phase adaptive.
Yes, phase adaptive approach. That's why it was taken positively, but was considered not enough. On the other hand, the major problem with ballistic missile defense program of the United States is not its technical capabilities, in particular those in Europe. I never believed that they had any effect on Russian strategic nuclear forces. The problem was that it was open-ended, and if you consider your defense programs and arms control strategies, you have to project them at least 10, 15 years ahead. And since Americans have never told us what would be the natural limits of defense if that is not against Russia, geographical, technical limits, it was a natural conclusion of Russian political leadership and strategies that it would go further and further and may eventually affect Russian strategic deterrence. That is the reason why it was not considered to be good, sufficient step to stop objecting to further nuclear reductions from strategic point of view. Now, with respect to China, I think China is a major concern, but with our present very bad relations with the West, this concern is hidden in the background, and we develop relations with China in all areas. Although, in the present situation, China found itself as a mediator between East and West, taking the place that Russia has been always striving to take and failed to take. But now it's China in the middle, and it's a very advantageous position. And we can develop our friendship with China only on China's conditions, and it's a challenge. But the challenge of China differs from challenge of the West. First of all, it's a challenge which is not immediate. It is 10, 15 years ahead. Secondly, it's not a challenge to Russian political system.
Thank you very much, Alexei. William, you want to?
Thank you. To the question on the NATO-Russia format, we are still open to dialogue at the ambassadorial level. Russia has requested one meeting, we did have one NATO-Russia meeting since the suspension of the working groups, but the technical working groups have stopped. You can imagine, it's just very difficult to have technical cooperation when so much is going on right now. It's difficult to imagine when that will restart. But in terms of political consultation, if Russia requests a meeting or if NATO wishes to seek at the ambassadorial level or above, that channel is still open for communication, and I hope we do use that sometime in the future. If there was an armistice, would that change things? Possibly. And getting on to the second question as well, the fundamental issue is, I'm a great student of the OSCE, I love it as an organization, the Helsinki Final Act and the Decalogue, it's something that's worth rereading from time to time. I mean, Russia has fundamentally rejected a couple of the actual principles in the Decalogue. They're changing borders, they're by force. So we're in a very difficult situation right now, and returning to core principles as foundation for engagement and as a foundation for discussion in the future is going to be important. But reading the NATO-Russia founding act is another useful exercise. If you go through and read actually what it says in there, the conditions in there do not currently exist, the conditions we describe where Russia's military doctrine was changing in a positive way, where Russian forces were withdrawing from Eastern Europe. This is all in the NATO-Russia founding act. We're not there right now, and so I think we're going to have to see a lot of changes before we can move back to any kind of normal relationship with Russia and a discussion of where we really are on principles. Because without core principles, you can't have all the things that followed from that. This is an incredibly difficult time, and I think people just can't wait to get back to business as usual and pretend that these principles don't exist. But I find it really hard to know how to move forward without a real reinvigoration of the core principles. We had at the OSCE summit, you know, a statement of reinvigoration of the principles, and that just seems so hollow now.
Thank you very much, William. Paolo?
Thanks. If I got the question right, I think if Europe were a free zone, a nuclear-free zone, I really believe that it would be much more credible in making the case in front of the Middle Eastern states that nuclear weapons, but also other categories of weapons of destruction, are not useful. But as I said before, you know, Europe is not a nuclear-free zone. There are British, French nuclear weapons, there are 200 nuclear forward deployed US weapons, plus there's a US nuclear umbrella extending over Europe. So again, if the most powerful conventional, also again, of course, nuclear military alliance in the world still needs to stick to those few hundreds tactical weapons, then its credibility in negotiating or in calling on the Middle Eastern states to make the case that nuclear weapons are not useful is really suffering from credibility. You know, to be a bit provocative, the presence of US nuclear weapons in Europe is like Saudi Arabia deployed Pakistani weapons on its soil. It's exactly the same principle. So that's a dangerous, as I said before, it's a very dangerous precedent that could establish, that could set up dangerous consequences somehow. So if Europe were a free zone, nuclear free zone, I believe the negotiating position of the Europeans and of the US would be much stronger, yeah, definitely, at least symbolically, at least politically.
Thank you very much, Paolo. I have 12 people on my list, so I will kindly ask everyone to keep their questions and remarks very short, please, as well as the answers later. So first of all, and the first, well, Paul Schulte, and Sir.
My name is Henk van der Kost. I'm a Dutch ambassador for disarmament. Thank you for three very interesting speeches. I was intrigued by what Mr. Arbatov said, we have to find new ways forward. I understand that. I think it's an interesting question that puts at the same time the question at the table, what do we do with the existing structure? And then I'm referring to the NPT, where we have a RevCon coming up. If we look at Budapest Memorandum, what does that mean for the NPT? One of the P5 has given a guarantee that apparently has no value anymore. That implies for many non-nuclear weapons states, we should look for something else to protect us. That brings me to a question to Mr. Faradori at the same time. A nuclear weapons-free zone in Europe, if I compare that with what has happened with the Budapest Memorandum, I'm wondering whether that's such a good idea. So I would appreciate your reaction to that. Thanks.
Paul Schulte, Birmingham King's College. My question's triggered by Paolo Faradori, but I'm interested in the panelists as a whole's view. Paolo says, as many people say, is a kind of fixed position, that American nuclear weapons in Europe are of very little value. That's often associated with West European. That's often associated with West European views. East Europeans, on the other hand, tend to feel that they are effective, if not in classical military deterrence and warfighting, at least in what we might call restraint or reassurance. Now, this creates a problem if, with the non-proliferation rhetoric, and Paolo has mentioned it, there's a cognitive clash here. We can't at the same time say weapon, nuclear weapons are bad things and not to be used and not very useful, and at the same time say, well, actually, they are useful, many, many millions of Europeans think. So I heighten that problem, there's a problem of truth and political convenience, but there's also a problem of evidence. And here's, well, I'd like the panel to comment on. What is the evidence either way for the impact of theater nuclear weapons, tactical nuclear weapons in Europe, both Russian and American? And is it likely, is it that in fact the withdrawal of American weapons would have absolutely no effect on Russian behavior and planning and confidence? This, I'm trying to make this a neutral question, what is the evidential base from which people hold passionate opinions?
Thank you very much. Sergey Galakha, Institute of International Relations, Kyiv, Tarashevchenka University, Ukraine. I'll try to be very brief. First, I'd like to acknowledge this panel must be the best I've seen at this conference, as the French say, chapeau, very qualified and sober analysis. But what I see as the problem is not only the future of the non-proliferation regime or arms control regime as such, it's the problem of world security architecture, it's the problem of international system in general. And I would challenge everybody who volunteers to comment in a kind of visionary way, what can we predict as the result of these, these events enrolling now in Ukraine or in the Middle East as the result? Hopefully, if they will be resolved more or less peacefully. Thank you.
There was a question right here? Oh, okay, here, sorry.
Thank you. Salomis Rabishvili, I'm in charge of the Iran panel at the UN. I was very interested by all three interventions, very challenging thoughts. Deterrence, Mr. Abatov's consultation that the systems of armed control is dead and end of history, yes. But what is striking is that thinking on deterrence, new arms control is not that much alive when you go to an American bookstore these days. It's hard to find an interesting book on the subject, and 20 years ago, it was a few rows on the, on the issue. So are people really thinking on how to renew these systems? Yes, the third actors would have to be included, it's clear that, that the world has changed in between. But what about deterrence and non-state actors? I've not heard any of you, I think, commenting on, on how you, do you deter now that we see the Islamic State gaining so much strength? And what would be the framework for this new arms control? Which institutional or non-institutional framework to include all the actors that need to be involved in such negotiations? And finally, very concrete question, I was very interested by this idea that non-proliferation system renewal needs, and I think it's true, the definition of a new line between this breaking capability that you have defined and a full state country that has nuclear weapons. Do you think that, and is there any thinking, and that's for Mr. Abatov specifically, is there any thinking in Russia that the Iran negotiations could provide the scheme for such a defining line? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's close the second round of questions for now. Paolo, would you like to go first, please?
Well, I'll try to start with answering, answering Paul's question on, on the evidence. And I think the evidence comes from NATO itself. I mean, NATO is, has reduced this number of, the number of weapons from several thousands to few, to, to fewer than 200s. And if you talk to even the military, if you talk to them, you know, the military value of all those weapons is, I'm not saying it's zero, but it's very limited. I think there's a consensus among policymakers, military diplomats, that the value is very limited. That's what I stated, it's not zero, it's not. And again, we can discuss on the evidence again, starting from the military value of the weapon is quite obvious, there's, I think, a wide consensus that there are no clear missions for those weapons, starting from, you know, for several reasons, because of the, the short range of the, of the delivery vehicles, because there are serious and preferable alternatives to those weapons. Modern conventional weapons can, can perform exactly those missions of, that the tactical weapons used to be designed for in the Cold War. And again, it's the military to say so. I mean, I could quote, you know, I could provide several quotation on that. So that's, the point is, is very limited. And, you know, if you make, you know, in a balance, the advantages of reducing them or getting rid of them compared to the limited value of those weapons is, in my view, it's, it goes in the direction of trying to get, getting rid of those weapons, that the advantage would be much, much more, much more, much bigger than the disadvantage.
The impact of Russian calculation?
Not automatically, I agree. I mean, not automatically, there might be, I guess, at this time, at this point in time, I think there's no room for any negotiation with the Russians, as I said before, there's no room for trying to get, you know, reciprocity, automatic reciprocity from the Russians. I guess NATO should consider to, a united action, perhaps. It's not, it's not, it's not going to happen, but that's, that would be my view, better than, than the status quo.
Thank you, Paolo. William, William?
Thank you for your comments. I agree entirely, the, the, the whole system of security assurances comes under question when a nation violates the Budapest memorandum, the whole network of security assurances comes into question, and that could have huge effects for the MPT. I hope it doesn't, I hope the damage can be contained. Paul, thank you very much for your question as well. If you look at empirical evidence, there's a level of unreality when we talk about NATO nuclear weapons that surprises me. Russia is doing its darndest to prove the utility of nuclear weapons. You look at their exercises, the combined use of conventional and nuclear weapons in Russian exercises is, to me, a very real and shocking development that we should be taking into account. They see these things as being incredibly useful. There's all this debate now about Russia's doctrine of preemptive nuclear strikes, de-escalatory nuclear strikes. These are crazy concepts that make things from Dr. Strangelove seem sane in comparison. The idea that Russia would engage in a regional conflict and use nuclear weapons early in order to dissuade outside powers from getting involved, that's terrifying. But Russia clearly sees extreme value in nuclear weapons. And so I have to ask from a NATO point of view, who would be safer, who would feel safer if these, as, as Paolo said, under 200 weapons were suddenly to be removed? Would anyone feel safer? Would Russia feel better? I, I'm not really sure what value that would have. They have huge value in terms of a physical commitment by the United States to alliance security. I don't really see the net gain for anyone other than a aggressive Russia for removing those weapons. And on the, the question on regional world security, you know, Russia's returned to very hard power, hardball, zero-sum game kind of international relations, and that has huge implications for the international system, where we have all been moving in this, moving away from zero-sum game and moving where everyone can gain in the security system. Now where Russia really seems to see every advance in the West as taking away from them and every advantage of theirs as taking away from us. It's, it's a very strange system that we're in, and we have to move back away from this entire way of politics. But it seems to be Putin himself, he strongly believes in zero-sum politics, and moving off that's going to be incredibly difficult. Arms control, cooperative security can be a way out of that, but they would have to embrace that.
Thank you, William. Alexei, please.
I will start, I will start with the last question that was directed to me. Yes, I think that negotiations with Iran, if they are successful, and we have a long-term comprehensive agreement, would certainly set a new plank for nuclear non-proliferation, dealing exactly with the problem which NPT was not designed to address from the very beginning. But all depends, of course, on what are the details of that agreement. Yesterday, at the plenary session, Iran negotiations were discussed extensively, but one of the most important issues was not addressed, how the present split between Russia and the West may affect negotiations. We're living in a somewhat Kafkaan world, when six powers negotiate with Iran, having behind the scenes the threat of sanctions if Iran fails to cooperate, while applying damaging sanctions against each other. Just think about it. And preparing for military conflict against each other, force concentrations, relocation of forces, now NATO, this is discussed, Russia is maneuvering with its conventional forces. So that, I think, makes the prospects of a successful agreement less encouraging. Or possibly, the United States will rely on bilateral dealing with Iran and make, make a lot of concessions to Iran in order to reach an agreement, because Iran promised to Europe to substitute Russian oil and gas in case there is an oil embargo. It seems that for the, for President Obama and Washington, now Russia is much bigger threat than Iran with its nuclear program. And there is a possibility that they would compromise with Iran, which would be very beneficial to Iran, but not satisfactory from the point of view of strengthening non-proliferation regime, would not be satisfactory to Israel and to other countries which are concerned about Iranian nuclear programs. But some norms which are being discussed certainly are innovative and very promising. For instance, that non-nuclear weapon country cannot have enrichment capacity exceeding its current and planned for the nearest future reactor needs. Was never like that, there was no such a norm before. But if it's established, and if it's not just this country which defines the needs, but the country together with IAA defines the needs, it would be very important norm limiting the most direct and fast route to nuclear weapons through enrichment capacity. That's just like an example. About, should, what should we do with existing systems? I think that existing systems, it's not only deadlock on nuclear arms control negotiations, it's also the threat of disintegration of the existing systems. INF treaty is the first candidate for, for denunciation, unfortunately. But also New START treaty, CTV, and even NPT. There are voices now raised, for instance, it would sound crazy, but there are voices in Russia raised that Russia should withdraw from NPT treaty. And you can find that in very respectable newspapers dedicated to security things. Maybe it's a small minority, maybe it's very, it's quite crazy, but it, it was not imaginable several years ago. So there, there is a threat to the existing system, how should we do it? We cannot do it on the basis of old models. For instance, START. If political environment is conducive sometime to the New START, we certainly cannot limit ourselves to only reducing nuclear ballistic missiles and nuclear-capable strategic bombers. Boost glide systems will have to be taken into account, long-range cruise missiles will have to be taken into account. Does not necessarily mean with traditional ways of just limiting and counting rules. For instance, the existing long-range sea-based cruise missiles are considered in Russia to be a serious strategic threat. You cannot deal with them through traditional arms control, but you can deal with them through innovative confidence-building measures. For instance, if more than routine number of conventional, of attack submarines leave ports, it has to, it has to be notified and explained, because submarines with cruise missiles may present theoretically a conventional counter-force strike capability, and many other things relating to that. Also, some ways have to be finally agreed with respect to conventional ballistic missile defenses. Maybe not limits on numbers, but limits on geographic deployment and on technical characteristics, which prevents them from, from being a boost phase intercept would be the way to deal with that. And certainly, for boost, for boost phase intercept, you need very different geographic deployment if you are defending against North Korea or Iran, or if you are defending against Russia. So these are the ways to deal with it. And the last question by Ukrainian colleague on the world order is the most difficult one. I can respond in a very general way. I think that the world order may be too great a challenge to project, but European order, in my mind, should rely on Russia returning to its European way of development, abandoning crazy ideas about Eurasian and so on, and, and traditional values and all that bullcrap. And finding an agreement that with the West, with European Union, with NATO, that post-Soviet space should not be a battle of rivalry and military conflicts, and that every post-Soviet state is free to make its choice, but also Russian interests are to be taken into account because of economic, humanitarian, security, and other concerns which Russia has in this area. And the final remark, I think, I, I, I have serious objections to what Russia is doing with respect to Ukraine. I just, my rule is not to criticize my government when I am abroad, I do it at home. But one thing I should say as a remark here, I think it was a big mistake of the West, and in particular of the United States, to underestimate how important Ukraine is for Russia. They dealt with it like with another Georgia or with another Lithuania, with all respect to those countries, Ukraine is something very different. And Russian policy with Ukraine, with, with respect to Ukraine is not foreign policy, it's Russian domestic policy problem by 90%. That was tremendously underestimated and misunderstood by the West with, during the last year, half-year in its policy towards Ukraine.
Alexei, thanks so much for your very frank and thought-provoking answers. So let's continue, please. Ma'am.
No. No, I can, I can use my voice, of course.
You want this one? Oh.
Thank you. I'm Polina Sinovets from Ukraine. First of all, I would like to, I'd say, to start maybe the discussion on which impact on the deterrence was performed by the Ukrainian, by the crisis over Ukraine. And first of all, I think that it's quite obvious that unfortunately, deterrence has gained the new breath with this crisis, because, well, of course, this is maybe not this direct link, but anyway, we know that Russia has declared in its military doctrine the possibility to use nuclear weapons for de-escalation of regional war. Therefore, if any kind of big nuclear power like the United States or even NATO, like nuclear alliance interferes in this crisis, that Russia can interpret it as that Russia can interpret it as just a case for de-escalation. This is why we see such a modest help of NATO towards Ukraine in the military issues, such a great carefulness just not to send to Ukraine anything which can be interpreted somehow like a military interference. And I think that here, deterrence shows, I mean, nuclear weapons, unfortunately, they're showing their usefulness. First of all. The second point is, I would like to say about Iran. Maybe there can be two lessons to Iran in this case, or two ways. First way is that today Iran can pretend to or can somehow try to substitute Russia in this oil and gas supplies. And therefore, it will give Iran some additional economic muscles for the development. On the other hand, the other lesson can be the failure of these Budapest memorandum assurances. And therefore, Iran might make, of course, wrong conclusion that it should develop its nuclear weapons unless so any kind of security assurances which can be given, they are quite weak if they are not given maybe in the framework of extended deterrence provided by someone. And as for my questions, I have two questions. Sorry for such a long speech. The first question is to Paolo. Well, you said that, and of course, the usefulness of tactical nuclear weapons in Europe are quite doubtful. But you said that Ukrainian crisis has demonstrated the complete uselessness of these weapons. Well, can you please explain me in what way? Because I know that NATO was not supposed to defend with tactical nuclear weapons, its partners as Ukraine. I mean, what kind of use, what additional uselessness was demonstrated by the Ukrainian crisis here? This is the first question. And the second question is to Alexei. I read in one of your books that so the Russia's nuclear potential will be reduced in one-third towards 2020, 2017 because of those ICBMs which was produced by the Uzhmas is going out of order. Well, do you think the current situation with the Ukraine and the problem with these economic ties and the production, will it influence somehow additionally to the situation? Or it just go as it was going? Like anyway, Russia has to build its own nuclear, I mean, missiles for, ICBMs for nuclear weapons, and so this is not a problem already for Russia? Of course, it's a problem, but I mean, the breaking of ties would not crucially influence Russia's missile potential for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Novia Sabey from Japan. Looking at the situation in Ukraine and also in the East Asia around Senkako Islands and other things, I feel very unhappy. What's happening is, militarily, what I call low-intensity confrontation, some sub-military confrontation. And then people all of sudden jump to the arguments of nuclear weapons. Some Japanese starts asking, can we depend on American nuclear deterrence? In Europe, they're talking Ukrainians lost Crimea because they didn't have nuclear weapons. But I think it's a responsibility of the experts that, don't be stupid. You're not going to use nuclear weapons for all those low-intensity confrontations. And the US, for example, has taken a nuclear posture review report which said they will only use nuclear weapons as a last resort. And that situation has not happened. So I think it is a responsibility for us to tell them. In that respect, in East Asia, Japan is encouraged by that nuclear posture review and pursuing the course to work on reducing the role of nuclear weapons. And what's happening as a fact, but also as a policy, we're pursuing to underline that fact. And one of them is that, in that sense, it is important that chemical weapons is becoming even more difficult to use. That helps East Asian situation. In that respect, I was curious to ask Mr. Alberg. When you said NATO is nuclear alliance, okay. I think, okay, that perhaps is so. But what exactly is nuclear alliance? What is it? Is any definition or salient point about it? Does that mean it includes nuclear deterrence? Or does that mean it includes deployment? What is it exactly?
Thank you. I had a quick question for Alexei Tariq Rob from CIPRI. Alexei, you correctly pointed out some of the problems with the current situation. But I think imperative on all of us that in bad times we should also try and look for solutions on how to return to a new normal. So my question to you was that there is at least one forum where the five nuclear weapon states meet periodically, and this is the so-called P5 process, where the Chinese are working on a glossary and the French helped work on this transparent, common reporting framework. So likely, there will be another meeting before the 2015 NPT review conference of the five nuclear weapons states. So would you not think that this is one forum where some of the concerns that you raised about including other nuclear armed states besides the Russian Federation and the US as a first step, China, UK, and France could be discussed? And other elements of how the five could cooperate in terms of restoring some concept of strategic stability? And at the end of the day, the Russian Federation and the United States still have the largest nuclear weapons arsenals. And that brings with it a responsibility to work on a concept of strategic stability and not to let this current situation deteriorate to a point where we start a new Cold War and a new arms race. And a question to William Alberg was, thank you for your presentation, but I think you rattled off a lot of stuff from the NATO website on NATO's nuclear doctrine, which really hasn't changed since 1999. You know, it'll be a nuclear armed alliance as long as nuclear weapons exist, a mix of conventional and nuclear. How, in what way do you think this comports with the commitments undertaken by the NATO NPT states on devaluing the role of nuclear weapons, delegitimizing them, reducing the salience of nuclear weapons and nuclear doctrines? The way you read the posture, which is correct, suggests that there has been no change, and therefore, these countries are really not serious. And once again, we will come to the review conference next year's, hear the same old platitudes, and nothing will change. And then everyone will be surprised why the NPT is in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Tariq. Just behind you, please.
Thank you. Alan Weir from Parliamentarians for Nuclear Nonproliferation and Disarmament. I was very interested in Dr. Arbatov's comments about new methods being required and also, to some degree, lack of understanding that perhaps contributed to the Ukrainian conflict, referring to the NATO commitment to create the conditions to make a nuclear weapons-free world possible. But my question is whether it's possible to create those conditions just by looking at the weapon systems? You know, whether it's like balancing ballistic missile defenses against conventional forces or global precision-strike weapons? Or whether what's more important is to find the ways of resolving these conflicts in cooperative security ways, rather than in military or force-projection ways? One example is the dispute between Norway and Russia on the delineation of the continental shelf. I mean, that was resolved very well through going to the Law of the Sea tribunal. So should there be more emphasis on these cooperative security mechanisms, on rebuilding the role of the OSCE, of highlighting the positive role that the UN can play in its many different aspects? The mediation, arbitration, adjudication, good offices of the Secretary General, et cetera? And maybe even the EU can play a positive role here. It's played a positive role in some areas. And I'm encouraged by the appointment of the new High Rep for Security and Foreign Relations, Federica Mogorini, who seems to have a positive relationship with Russia and may be able to help facilitate some of this understanding and therefore, conflict resolution that Dr. Arbatov was talking about. So I wonder if the panelists can talk about that, emphasizing the cooperative security mechanisms as opposed to like military and political force to resolve some of these conflicts that give rise to nuclear weapons?
Thank you. And finally?
Very short question for Alexei. According to you, is there any chance to bring some nonsensitive, non-strategic nuclear threat reduction mechanism in action with Russia, I mean? In the sense, is there any fora, perhaps the International Atomic Energy Agency, to continue the dialogue on fissile material, on nuclear septic operation vis-à-vis Russia? Since the global political environment, as we listen today, is very weak.
Thank you very much, sir. So let's close this session. William, please.
Thank you very much. Let's see. What is a nuclear alliance? There are three allies that have nuclear weapons. So if you just look at it from a purely functional point of view, as long as nuclear weapons exist, the US, UK, and France have nuclear weapons, we will remain a nuclear alliance. In other words, if we were not, if we said that we were not a nuclear alliance, that would mean that the United States, the UK, and France are saying, we have certain weapon systems which we're not going to dedicate to the defense of the alliance. You understand that that would be impossible. If the alliance is under threat, if the alliance is attacked, we have to say that nuclear deterrence is an important part of defending the alliance, of trying to prevent that attack. And if it comes down to it, if the actual existence of the allies is threatened, that nuclear weapons will be part of the mix of how we defend ourselves. So, you know, just from a purely functional point of view, you can't say that it's not a nuclear alliance, because that would mean the US says, well, we'll defend the alliance but only with some of our weapons. Now, it has to be an attack on Berlin or Tallinn is an attack on Washington DC, and we will use all our means to defend ourselves. So I think that's what being a nuclear alliance means. And how do you square that with the NPT goals of a world free of nuclear weapons? Well, I would argue that NATO allies and the vast majority of the states of the OSCE were really trying to embrace cooperative security as a way forward and had moved beyond zero-sum politics and to use cooperative mechanisms to resolve conflicts and to use international bodies. And the way that Norway solved that problem with Russia was very laudable. But I think we have to pay attention to what Russia does. And I think Russia has moved away from cooperative security. I think they think, if you read Putin's statements very carefully, that he thinks Russia got a raw deal in the 90s, that cooperative security isn't the way forward, that the OSCE does not meet their needs. And if you look just functionally at what Russia does, it appears now that for Russia to get what they want out of the international system, the best way for them to guarantee that a country doesn't join NATO or doesn't sign an agreement with the EU is to actually occupy that country. Georgia, Moldova, Ukraine now. That creating permanent crises is the best way for them to guarantee that they don't get the worst outcome that they are trying to avoid. So until Russia re-embraces an international system and sees that they get something out of cooperative security, I don't know what else to do. I mean, we've relied on it as much as we can, and I think they've relied on actual military invasion in order to represent their interests. That makes it very difficult to see a way forward. I think allies have done anything, everything they can to reduce the salience of nuclear weapons, and I think Russia has done everything they can to increase the salience of nuclear weapons. So we're in a very unequal situation there. We've said that they're a weapon of last resort. Russia's now saying they're a weapon of first resort. So I would say that where the persuasion needs to happen is in Moscow. So for all of you, I would say, challenge Russia on their nuclear doctrine. I don't think NATO nuclear doctrine is really one of the world's biggest problems. I do think Russia's nuclear doctrine is one of the world's biggest problems.
Thank you. Alexei, please.
Polina asked a question, and also she left. I will respond to it. Oh, you're here. Well, when I wrote that Russian strategic forces would be reduced by 30%, it was because heavy missiles were becoming obsolete, and they will be obsolete soon. But the rate of deployment of single-warhead or ground-mobile missiles was not enough, was insufficient. Now, situation has changed, of course. There is a new heavy missile which is being developed in place of the existing heavy missile, which is interesting because it's not a good idea to my mind. But it's interesting because placing a heavy missile into a silo that has become vulnerable to nuclear strikes 30 years ago means that Russia is no longer concerned about American nuclear weapons and no longer concerned about American disarming nuclear strike. This is a major change in Russian strategy that went largely unnoticed. Russia is mostly concerned about American precision-guided conventional systems delivering counterforce or disarming strike. So placing a heavy missile into a silo and defending it with last-ditch defense systems makes Russian military leadership assured that retaliatory capability is sufficiently invulnerable. About the new Russian doctrine, it's not for the first time that this notion of using nuclear weapons as a demonstration for de-escalation is raised. When Sergei Ivanov was Minister of Defense, he played with the idea, but it was not included in the Russian military doctrine of 2010. I'm not sure it will be. Speculation among experts is not enough. Maybe it will not be the amendment, one of the amendments to the new doctrine. But on the other hand, it could happen. However, I think it's a bad decision. It's lowering nuclear threshold, sends the wrong signal. I agree with all that. But we are not a pioneer in that. American nuclear strategy under President Bush played intensively with this idea, talking about mini-nukes, about deep penetration nukes, selective use in a wide range of circumstances. France is also quite innovating with this respect. French nuclear doctrine is very romantic and unclear, but possibly includes the notion of some of use of nuclear weapons for disazion or for whatever they want to use it. Nobody is really interested, because nobody believes that. It's a real strategy. It's rather a fantasy. But still, France is playing with this idea. Now, Tariq, to your question. I think all forums for discussion of nuclear weapons are useful, both official and unofficial. P5 forum is not a forum for negotiations. It's rather a talk shop. I do not expect any kind of serious negotiations coming out of this forum, because the basic assumption is wrong. The assumption is that moving from bilateral to multilateral format implies other nuclear weapon states joining Russia and the United States in negotiations on nuclear weapons disarmament. I do not believe that it can happen. If ever it happens, it will happen in a very different way. The experience of nuclear arms control, and that is the only practical thing on which we can rely, shows that productive, practical nuclear arms control happens on the basis of two conditions. One condition, the states have to be in some kind of mutual nuclear deterrence relationship. Otherwise, trade-off doesn't make sense. There is no sense for France and Britain to negotiate with the United States in nuclear arms control. They are not in a mutual deterrence relationship. There is no quid pro quo for their limitations. The second is approximate symmetry or approximate equality, because otherwise, it's very difficult to find a technical basis for limitations. So I think that most promising way theoretically, from theoretical point of view, for instance, is for China to negotiate with the United States limits on nuclear weapons. Of course, their forces are very asymmetric. But if you start with partial steps, it would be possible to find some common denominator. For example, just illustration. For example, United States and China agree to limit by an equal ceiling their land-based intercontinental medium-range and shorter-range missiles. And the number will be approximately 400 to 500. That will provide China with equality, which will be very good for Chinese prestige, equal with the United States. On the other hand, it will leave the United On the other hand, it will leave the United States with great advantage in sea-based and air-based forces, which will not be part of the agreement. Americans do not have medium and shorter-range systems. They only have intercontinental systems. But the sum of Chinese ICBMs, medium-range and shorter, is approximately that number. So they could sign such an agreement, which would incidentally limit medium-range Chinese conventional systems, which are major concern to the United States, DUNFAN 21. But China would require some kind of limitation of American ballistic missile deployment in the Pacific. It's enough to defend against North Korea. Further expansion would be perceived as something which is designed against Chinese nuclear deterrence. So that would be an important American contribution to such negotiations and agreement. Another example, India and Pakistan. They do not, they have nothing to negotiate either with Russia or with the United States or with France and Britain, but they have a lot to negotiate among themselves, and they have approximate parity. And they could agree on a common ceiling on their land-based missiles, taking as a guideline the definitions of INF treaty. But that was zero, but they could agree on 100 limit, for instance, and that would make a big step towards those countries joining nuclear arms control. So P5, okay, but do not expect too much of that. That's just an arena for good talk, but nothing more. Sorry for taking so long. Responding to the question of the friend from CIPRI, yes, you are right. When we are talking about technicalities of nuclear arms control, we are addressing the easiest problem of the move towards a nuclear-free world. Because the real serious problem is rearranging international security and international relations so that nuclear weapons will no longer be a basis for security or for security guarantees for the countries of the world. That's why sometimes it's said that nuclear-free world is not the present world minus nuclear weapons. It's a world which is very different from the present world. That has to be kept in mind if sometime in the future we return to the idea of nuclear-free world, which certainly is not the current problem in our relationship. And Mauricio, question about fissile material. I think it's a very important area of negotiations. In the past, it was conceived as a symbolic step to show that the countries are moving towards, along the way of nuclear disarmament and to stop Pakistan from increasing its stockpile of nuclear materials. That is deadlocked. But in the future, as a second step after physical reductions of warheads and delivery vehicles, sometime we will have to address this problem because reducing delivery vehicles and even dismantling warheads, which we have never done in the history of arms control, would raise a question of fissile material. What do you do with a fissile material? How you address this? So we will return to that, but that's what I call hardcore nuclear arms control. It's not, it's not the present stage when we are discussing delivery vehicles and a number of warheads.
Thank you, Alexei. Paolo, please.
Thank you. Ukraine is not a member of NATO, so the crisis is not a real test, a real test for the value of NATO extended deterrence. So what we say is just speculation. When I said that the crisis proves that tactical nuclear weapons in Europe are largely useless for deterrence and reassurance purposes, I meant that they did not prevent Russia to take military actions against Ukraine and violate its sovereignty. And I mean that the NATO members of Central Eastern Europe are not reassured, are not reassured, and indeed they ask for NATO assistance, and that assistance came in the forms of conventional weapons. They asked for conventional weapons, and NATO deployed more conventional forces, was going to deploy more conventional forces in those countries around the theater. So the bottom line is that the role of tactical nuclear weapons is rather irrelevant. And I stress tactical nuclear weapons. I'm not saying that the role of nuclear weapons is not existing in the current crisis. I'm talking about nuclear weapons and the role of the backyard presence of nuclear weapons is there in the crisis, the role of strategic nuclear weapons is there. We know that NATO and Russia are nuclear weapon states or alliances. I'm just here discussing the value of those few tactical nuclear weapons. And again, in my view, getting rid of those nuclear weapons is not a big deal, just because, simply because NATO will remain anyway a strong nuclear alliance counting on three nuclear member states, US, France and the UK. That's also in the crisis, conventional issue more relevant to me. The role of nuclear weapons and tactical nuclear weapons is negligible, although in the background, of course, you have the presence of nuclear weaponry, that for sure. Right, yeah.
Thanks very much, Paolo. I still have four questions, and we're already behind schedule, so I will kindly ask the last person to speak, no more than 30 seconds each, please. That will be difficult, but I mean, we really have to do this if we want to, to have at least a short break behind, before the last plenary session. Sir, could you please pass the mic? I mean, there was Lukash, I think, ma'am? You wanted to do it? Okay.
Can I ask? Okay. Mustafa Kibarolu, MEF University in Istanbul. Referring to what Paul Schulte just mentioned, I mean, the Western Europeans want to get rid of these weapons and Eastern Europeans want to keep these weapons in Europe, so why don't they take some of them? When we say that, they make reference to the Founding Act, which has been accused by, actually, I mean, Russia has been accused by bridging the Founding Act. So some even suggest that we should throw them away, that all the agreements with Russians with respect to the Budapest in 1997. So if Central Eastern European allies are so keen to see a tactic nuclear weapons in Europe, why don't they take some of them? That's the question.
Thank you, Mustafa. Lukash.
I'm tempted, but I'm not going that way. Lukash Kulase, European Leadership Network. Shortest possible question to Alexei. Do you think that the New START will last until 2021, and do you think that INF will last until 2015? Thank you very much.
Oliver Meier, German Institute for International and Security Affairs. I wanted to come back to the question of the nuclear dimension of the Ukraine crisis and ask whether, there were several references that this crisis already has a nuclear dimension, if you like, whether, given the kind of integration of nuclear weapons in the military doctrines on both sides, that's inevitable, or whether there is a way to limit the role of nuclear weapons in both conflicts, or whether there's a desire on part of Russia and also NATO to do that, and what possible instruments we would have, even under the current circumstances, communication channels and so on, to signal to both sides that we don't want a further role of nuclear weapons in this crisis? Thanks.
Annika Tummbor from the Swedish Ministry for Foreign Affairs. End of arms control as we know it bilaterally and multilaterally. We need new principles and new formats. At the same time, over the last 25 years at least, we have had a vast variety of concrete proposals being put forward by different groups of countries, and many of them, or well, no, some of them have found their way into NPT review documents, consensus documents, especially in 2000 and 2010 when it comes to nuclear disarmament. What measures do you think would be useful to pursue at this time, if any of those that have already been agreed, and in what ways? Thanks.
Do you have a question? I'm sorry.
20 seconds. One is Turkey is insisting on nuclear weapons, American nuclear weapons on its soil. The security guarantees, if anything, has grown stronger rather than weaker as a result of the situation. And second, I'd just draw your attention to the fact that the Iranians have already drawn the conclusion from the Libya crisis that the utility of nuclear weapons is actually greater and giving up, as Gaddafi had done on his nuclear weapons program, was a great mistake.
Thanks very much. So let's.
Just a final word.
Great.
Also, picking up on what Mustafa suggested. I think, although I've been advocating, you know, the elimination of tactical nukes from Europe, I think right now, at this very moment, I think it's better, I mean, the status quo is preferable to any change. I mean, not rocking the boat, the boat is likely the widest strategy at this very moment. Because first, you know, removing tactical nukes now means probably implies increasing NATO conventional forces, and this could have a negative effect of increasing the salience of nuclear weapons in the Russian security policy to compensate again for the conventional inferiority. So that's a dilemma here, because on the other hand, any hypothetical increase in the number of NATO tactical nukes or moving those weapons farther to the east would clearly be perceived rightly by Russia as a dangerous escalation of tensions, and that would be, and that would cause certainly a reaction. So here, we are in a dilemma, and I think right now, again, as I said before, it's better not to do anything, at least the situation is pacified at least, or at least not so tense. Because right now, doing something on that issue might be danger in both directions.
Thanks very much. Alexei, would you like to?
Responding to Lukash's question. All depends on how situation develops in Ukraine in the next couple of months. If the ceasefire doesn't hold and military actions continue, I think that INF will not survive till 2015, probably. It will not survive till the end of this year. With START, it's a little bit different. If, it's up to Americans to decide it. Even response to Russian withdrawal from INF, they decide to withdraw from START, then certainly it will not survive till 2021. But for Russia to withdraw from START would be a very stupid decision because it only limits Americans, doesn't limit Russians in any way. We are already below the ceilings of START, and we will hardly get up to its ceilings by the year 2020 or 2021. Now, about limiting role of nuclear weapons. You know, one of the problems that we seldom discuss is that the present political leaders, in particular in Russia, they do not have experience of Cold War. They do not know anything about Berlin crisis, Cuban Missile Crisis, Yom Kippur Crisis. They haven't lived through that, and they do not have institutional memory and continuity. They came from some other places, and they are very easygoing about nuclear weapons and careless about what they say, hopefully not what was, what they do, but careless about what they say. I think, I find it a very bad phenomenon, but unfortunately, this is the situation. President Putin, after returning to Kremlin, has never said a single word in favor of nuclear disarmament, but he said a lot about impossibility of nuclear disarmament and has given a lot of reasons, most of which I cannot agree with. But still, you know, nuclear weapons are not the weapons of first resort, and will never be for Russia, the weapons of first resort. It will, it will always stay as a weapon of last resort despite the irresponsible declarations. However, nuclear threshold may be lowered, and that's very bad. And finally, what steps about arms control? I think that, provided that political environment improves, the first step in arms control should be negotiating next START treaty, taking into account long-range conventional systems, including them, along with the precedent already established in the New START. That would start the process and expand it to other areas of nuclear arms control and hopefully nuclear nonproliferation.
Thank you very much. And William, for a final remark.
Thank you. Why don't the eastern members take the nuclear weapons? I couldn't imagine a more provocative move right now, and I think the best thing to do would be to do things that are not terribly provocative. We have a, we have a pledge at NATO, the three noes, and I think we should stick to that as much as possible. And I do think that the basing nations as well are very responsible, and they take their commitments seriously, and so I don't, I don't think we should really change that. I hope New START and INF stay and last. I think that would be a very good thing, and I agree with Alexei that further negotiations would, for successor to New START, is going to be an important test that will come up On escalation and Oliver's question, you know, there has to be communications channels, and I think because the United States and NATO just moved past the whole idea that Russia was an adversary at all, I think we eliminated a lot of our ability to receive nuclear messaging from Russia in terms of escalatory or de-escalatory messaging in nuclear crises. And I think that's something we're going to have to relook at again, because my worst fear is that Russia does something to signal with their nuclear weapons, the alliance, the alliance doesn't read the message and does something that then ends up going, is received in the Kremlin as a clear signal, that we could have inadvertent conflict that way. And so I think being a, renewing our thinking about what deterrence means and what escalatory messaging means and all that kind of stuff is going to be an important sense of renewal, and just in order to have peace and stability. It's unfortunate that we have to go down that route, but I think it is important. And I do think new negotiations would be a good signal. Personally, I think FMCT, CTBT's ratification is still going to be difficult, but if we did more tests in terms of verification, more demonstrations of verification of CTBT, I think that would be an excellent thing. And basically, anything that Russia could do that would show that they're interested in a rule-based system and following those rules with intrusive verification would be a good sign from them. I'll leave it to Russia to go, to explore that.
Thanks very much, William. Thanks to our three panelists for these very rich and frank answers, and thanks everyone for a very stimulating discussion. Before we reconvene in less than 10 minutes downstairs in the palace ballroom, please join me in thanking the panelists.